This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call a meeting to order. A roll call.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Beard.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Dressler.
Here.
Bosworth.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
Under the nation.
Under the flag.
Indivisible, liberating.
Thank you.
Chair Kidd, we need an excused absence for Commissioner Ospey.
Okay, could I have a motion for that, please?
Motion for accusing Commissioner Ospey.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I. Unanimous, thank you. I'd also ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
A second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
I. Unanimous, thank you. Are there any conflict of interest with the item that's on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. Dale?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We don't have an agenda out here, and I'm not sure what you said. Oh, okay. Is there an agenda that we can look at?
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair, did I let the agenda?
Any correspondence, Dale?
No.
Okay. Any introductions, Dale, of those that are in the audience that I can't see?
Yes, Mayor Jurnigan is present, Ruth Musso Lopez is present, Jenny from The Paper is present, and Don, our planning director, is present.
Great, okay. Thank you all for attending. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that the cellphones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to California Government Code Section 54950 prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. So we have a public hearing, the public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of the updated City of Needles general plan, land use and transportation elements, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Staff report.
Your Honor, I believe we have a public comment from Ms. Musso Lopez.
Public appearance.
Oh, for public appearance, I'm sorry? Okay, go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, my name is Ruth Musser Lopez, and I live in Needles for, I've lived here for forty, almost forty-five years, basically in the same neighborhood. I'm not sure that I will have time to get to this. It really is background information for my request. It's coming later, but since I got three minutes on that other thing. I just wanted to make you aware of a situation that Planning Commission should have knowledge of, and that is that there is a parcel of land at the end of Downey Avenue next to the freeway, if you're going west on Downey. It comes in as a little desert area, and the kids use it, they play there, they walk, adults, kids walk their dogs there. It's, it's actually what it is, is vacant land that was owned by it privately, but I think the city picked it up. Pretty sure they did in a tax sale. It was never developed. It's always been like a little desert. It's always been like a flooding zone, flood basin area for the drainage that comes out of the culvert under the freeway from the county's dam that they built, I don't know when, but probably before the freeway was put in or sometime around the same time. But there's a dam back there on the other side of the freeway, and it holds the water back that comes down, drains out of the Eagle Pass and Lily Hill Wash. Lily Hill Wash spans out, and this is one of the segments of the area down closer to the river where it has always washed down this way, and that's why there's a big embankment there, which up above is a cemetery, which I talked to you about last week when I was here. But I just, I just wanted to make you aware in the future, I know that there's the road repair coming up and everything. But this area should not ever be developed because if it is, it would cover up the dirt right after the water comes out of that culvert. Right now, it's used, it's, the water drains in there before it gets to the road. It spreads out, it's a spreading basin, basically. It spreads out, and then it doesn't come onto Downey. But the water that does make it down to Downey is not very much, except if it really rains hard. But it does go flow. It's basically the drainage plan for the county put in place. I guess they had that in mind, that this little hole would hold most of the water back, and the rest of it would come down and drain down Downey to D, then Acoma, and then out to the river. It doesn't go underground. They never did underground it. They never did put in big, you know, pipes to take that. So I just wanted to make you aware for future planning purposes. That's probably why the road is getting messed up all the time.
Okay, thank you. Any other public appearances? Okay, seeing none. So we'll move into the public hearing then. The public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of the updated City of Needles general plan use and transportation elements, and adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Staff report.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, in front of you, you have a document that hasn't been seen by a governing board in thirty-seven years. And so the general plan, land use, and transportation update is finally here, and it's timely, because we're moving, we're moving into the future, folks. And so, as you all know, this is a three-year-long process that started back in 2019. That was fully grant-funded entirely, ninety-nine percent of it was grant-funded. And we're very fortunate for our funding partners, the state of California, and then the Department of Transportation. Both of them provided us with grants to be able to achieve this big feat. So we're thankful that for their funds and to help move the city forward. As you recall, last time you met Colin, but I wasn't here last time, I was doing it online. So I'd like to formally introduce you to Colin Drucker, who's going to be talking to you, and basically, you've gone through this before. We're here to just talk about any loose ends that need to be identified, and our goal is to get a recommendation from the Planning Commission, so this can go to the city council on February twenty-eighth. So our recommendation is going to be for approval of this document. And with that, Colin Drucker, I'm going to get out of your way.
This is, again, Colin Drucker with Placeworks. This is going to be a truncated version of what folks may have seen last night and what was presented a little while ago on the first. And I will highlight the changes that have happened since then informed by either comments from the first study session with this body or from folks from the council study session. So Patrick just summarized a lot of this. We've said it enough here. I won't bother going through that. You know, just to remind everybody, this was three years of outreach. And then we kind of spread the word amongst all the property owners that, you know, your properties may be changing due to the nuances of the consolidated mapping. Just again, as a reminder, we're building in this capacity for growth, so this isn't limiting you. This is just providing additional SEQA efficiency and infrastructure planning and transportation planning to understand if you get another thousand units, eleven hundred units over the next ten to twenty years, then we planned our infrastructure systems and our services appropriately. These are some of the land use goals went over, basically just trying to have, deal with all of the uses that are in Needles, all the complexity of living in a town that actually has the full range of rural residential, all the way to industrial, along a river, in a desert. How do we deal with land use compatibility there? How do we make sure that Needles isn't overly reliant on one industry and creates jobs and keeps jobs and businesses here and improves them? How do you increase access to the river and nurture that asset that the city has? And then looking at that downtown core, how do we make it into an even better place for the locals and a regional destination? And then for transportation, it's really just about living with what you have, and we ran the traffic model to figure out you could live with the streets as you have them. Obviously, paving and other standard maintenance and improvements can continue on, but you can keep the same right-of-way, so you always have that right-of-way, but you don't need to add lanes or other types of intersection improvements. What we did here, there was, there was a business owner who came in, or a property owner who has some businesses and some buildings that aren't filled with businesses because of some concerns about parking in the downtown area. We already were looking at adding parking by a diagonal parking design for Broadway and taking that from a four-lane facility down to a two-lane, and really dramatically going from a handful of parallel parking spaces to a lot more diagonal, and then added the language you see there to explore other places besides Broadway where we can expand parking. But then working with, let's say, BNSF to understand where their parking should be, and then where, if we do add parking, where that should be limited for the businesses, so you don't just get the overcrowding there. And then looking at where we can add facilities for people who aren't just driving around, most of which, you know, are shorter than I am and younger. So also with the land use map, gone over this a number of times, I'll get to the part that people are really interested in, which is the changes. We have been updating the map as we've been going along. Again, nothing's really changed too much in terms of the broad strokes. Almost everything's staying the same, if it's just, if the name is changing. Five percent is privately owned and is changing both the general plan and the zoning. So, good news, I made a mistake, but it's a bank error in someone's favor. Basically, it's instead of twenty-eight homes that we thought we might be adding to the pile of nonconforming, those uses that aren't already allowed by the existing zoning. As it turns out, out of the hundred and thirty-nine, all of them were inconsistent with either the zoning or the general plan. So there was some sort of nonconformity going on. Eighteen of those, we said, well, you're already inconsistent with one of them, and we think that a land use that doesn't allow single-family is the right choice. We've looked at those individually. There are some that are up in the north, basically near the and then there are some scattered around, some general commercial areas, really surrounded by businesses. And then there's some down in kind of in the south where you have some abandoned businesses and areas where there's a lot more industrial activity taking place. But all of them are allowed to stay. And what you like to do on a land use plan is you like to have logical land use patterns. You don't like to have little islands of homes sitting around. So that's why we've continued with some of these to say, well, we recognize there's an existing single-family home there, but the dominant pattern is something other than residential here, and we want to stick with that. Still, no active businesses, even with the changes that people have been asking about, no active businesses have been made nonconforming. These are the land use changes that have occurred in terms of our proposal. And so, once I get my animation right, number one there, that's the cemetery use. We still have maintained that, just that change there. If you have questions on that, we can answer those. Number two and three are really along Bailey Avenue, and that's, it was originally, some of the zoning was general commercial. The general plan was a little different. And it was just kind of an oversight. We said, oh, there's a medical center there, and look, they own some of the property, and then the city owns some of the property. On the east side of Bailey, it really makes sense for all of that to continue to be public facilities, really in support in the future use of or supportive uses of the medical center. And then along the west side, really looking at where do you put general commercial versus where do you put neighborhood commercial? Typically, you would, around residential neighborhoods, you would prefer to have neighborhood commercial, just because it's lower in intensity and scale. And there's a lot of existing residents and a lot of future residents that could go around there. So we felt that neighborhood commercial was more appropriate. It's also pretty far away from the freeway and any sort of major roadways that would benefit from having access. And then along Lily Hill, looking at that, we really wanted to maintain that. It's just kind of a residential nature. Doesn't really need to have the commercial nature or the traffic that would come with, potentially with general commercial, which again, is a little bit more intense. More traffic volumes, we would rather have that slower driving down there.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt to ask a question real quick while we're here?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Beard.
When you say number one, P for cemetery, that is the historical cemetery.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, not the other cemetery.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And then we also made a change to the light manufacturing designation. Just in recognition, there's always, there's always going to be these uses where you understand the existing use, and you understand the historical context of when that use came into being, and then you look at the surrounding uses, and then you look at that common logical land use pattern. And we said, okay, there are some things in light manufacturing, right, oh, let me step back. Right now, the city has an industrial general plan designation, just in, just a single designation. Then it has two zones, M1 and M2. Since we're moving to a single map system, we're now not just having a single industrial designation. M1 and M2, the zones are fairly similar. Right now, there's very little distinguishing them. But ultimately, when the city looks at a more comprehensive zoning code update, that can be addressed. And what we wanted to do was reflect the two category nature of industrial in the zoning, because light manufacturing is good to have as a designation, so you have primarily internally-focused activities that don't pollute a lot or emanate a lot of noise or vibration. But allowing some limited outdoor activities so that you don't essentially force everything to be general manufacturing, and go back to kind of having just one singular industrial use, which allows everything is beneficial. So we felt it was a good compromise to, for some uses that you don't want to have, again, a little island of general manufacturing surrounded by limited industrial. It starts to become also hard to justify to the property owners why you can't, you know, well, they did general manufacturing, how come I can't do general manufacturing? So we instead modified the light manufacturing designation, and then the zoning code can get updated in a more thorough manner later on. Again, we added a little bit more detail and consistency and some density and intensity standards to the general plan. And then in the downtown core, we're really trying to identify an area where you want to allow more intense uses, mixed uses, treat that Broadway area as a slower street rather than a pass-through. And then we did hear from the council last night, and there was some talk about this, and you know, you make choices about where boundaries go, and we chose initially to stop at E Street. And they said, well, you know, I think we talked about it going to E Street at one point, or D Street at one point, we'd like that. So we went ahead and are bringing this forth for your consideration to see what your opinions on those are. And then we have looked at the, while we were looking at the general commercial zone, we went ahead and looked at the neighborhood commercial and said, you know, general commercial already allows multifamily. That is the appropriate zone where you can get this mix of residential and commercial uses. It's a more intense commercial use. You can get mixed use in there. We don't need residential and neighborhood commercial as well, because otherwise, pretty soon you start having no point to having designations, because everything allows everything, and then you just say, well, look, it's neighborhood commercial. Let's keep that for a commercial. And so we stripped out the single-family allowance there.
I have to interrupt you again. Madam Chair, may I interrupt while we're here?
Yes, go ahead.
The packet shows no change on D Street and E Street.
Yeah, this was a very late, by, I think, forty-five minutes before here.
Well, it would have been. We got our packets on Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, last night was the study session.
Thank you.
But good to point out, in case those are wondering the same question of what the heck is this person talking about? And so also, alongside helping the city with their pro-housing designation application, the state said, hey, you need some tweaks to your density bonus law. And we said, okay, this is all related to housing. It's a good, consistent with the general plan. So we updated your density bonus provisions so that they simply point to state law, so you don't have to worry about the next twenty-five changes that the state makes to the density bonus law. And you maintain consistency, eligibility for grants, and your staff isn't spending time on minutia about updating things per state code, and they can answer your questions instead. So on the roadway network, we have updated, aside from what we talked about before, on the K Street underpass, we've removed the option that allows for more invisions, just a non-vehicular use except for emergency vehicles. So we just have one street section in there that shows both vehicular and non-vehicular. And that street section is, obviously can be adapted to however it's appropriate. For the bike and ped network, we didn't really change anything here. The K Street underpass retains the ability to provide that pedestrian and bike connection. Now, on truck routes, we didn't, we didn't hear any changes from the public or the city council on anything that would affect this diagram. And so the SEQA stays the same. That hasn't changed. SEQA is required, any sort of environmental analysis of a discretionary action that this and the city council bodies are making. The conclusion was, there is no impacts from the projected, basically what they analyze is, what happens if eleven hundred new units and all the people come here and all of these new jobs? What are the impacts of all the new cars that are coming here, all the emissions out of the air pipe? What's the impact on air quality? Noise, other aspects of the physical environment? And then how is this consistent with other plans? And basically, everything was consistent except for the city's own internal zoning, which we're fixing by proposing the amendments to the zoning code, so that'll kind of be self-mitigating upon action. And that MND was distributed for thirty days, and we really just got one comment in the county saying, hey, we're concerned. Maybe you did, or maybe you didn't take into consideration our regional flood, flood and infrastructure issues. And we said, don't, don't worry, we did. We responded to them, and they were fine. And that final MND is in your packet. So after the first two study sessions, we're back here, and then pending your recommendation, if we move forward, we would go to the twenty-eighth. And this is the listed recommendation, and otherwise, we're available for comments. I can turn it back over to Patrick if he wants to say anything.
Right. So as you all know, we did go through a thorough process. The Sid go to a planning commission work study, study session, the Sid go to the city council study session. There were changes. Obviously, you've seen those changes, and you've got the latest and greatest. Obviously, other comments have been brought forward and prepared to talk about those. You've got an email that was sent to us by Mr. Jerry Tayes, and so that's in front of you. Take a look at it. If you have any questions on it, I believe Mr. Tayes is on the line as well. So that correspondence was received prior to the meeting for your review. But with that, we stand available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have questions.
Yeah, I'll take now questions from, of the staff. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, you were talking about, you eliminated the housing element from the general commercial element areas. And so I'm just curious what happens with those old historic homes on Front Street and I and J in that area, even on Broadway, the existing hundred-year-old homes. Does that mean if one burns down or gets destroyed, you can't build another home on that lot, because it's general?
So that, well, there's, there's, because I've got some, a couple of bullets that might confuse people there. So the, where we remove res, single-family residential as a permitted use, where it currently is permitted right now, is just in neighborhood commercial. But in general commercial right now, general commercial has, has, well, I'm not sure when it got amended, but it hasn't in recent years allowed for single-family residential in the general commercial. So it would already be subject to the city's nonconforming provisions, which means that they're allowed to rebuild, I believe it's, they're allowed to be rebuilt after a fire, and then you're allowed to make improvements up to twenty-five percent and stay there in perpetuity.
Okay.
Yeah, which is a little bit more permissive than, there are some jurisdictions that say, oh, you burned down, guess what, you got to rebuild according to the current code, but yours allows.
My concern is that I just value the history of those old houses. And I know that some people like to think of that area as like in a transition phase where we would just eventually, they would all disappear one day and you just put commercial in there. And I, I just have a I just have a place in my heart for those old homes, and I'd like to see them salvaged if we can.
I mean, I'm thinking there could be something, some jurisdictions will put in a provision, and it's appropriate in, in the land use element. Although they're not necessarily, to my knowledge, listed on as a historic resource.
Correct.
Right? You could go with basically an age-based threshold that says that, you know, homes that are over a certain age, that are single-family homes are allowed, and they could even now improve is an interesting word, because you could limit the improvements to be, I mean, you start to get down the road of historical accuracy and things like that. So there could be something put into the code that says, hey, we're going to allow these single-family homes, and if, even if they want to improve, they can stay because we want them to stay good-looking and stay in good repair, not just sit there and rot away.
Right.
I think what he's saying is that basically, in a commercial zone, so we're not, so for instance, this area right now. So in this area along Front Street, there are single-family homes that are allowed there. It's a general commercial area. Obviously, if the home burns down, that historic home is no longer there.
Right.
And so we're not messing with, or we're not interrupting or impeding or any type of issues with that existing home. That existing home will be able to live on as long as it's able to live on. And so by, by having, what you're talking about is this issue of preservation, but we're not losing any of the preservation with what we're proposing today. So that will allow to exist. It can be there even if it's not allowed within the zone. Obviously, if it burns down, they can rebuild it, but the historic home's gone.
Right.
And if they need to do some sort of improvements, they can do that today with our nonconforming use. It's basically, it's an existing nonconforming use.
Okay.
And so there wouldn't be any issues with the way the code is written today. By being, it being in a general commercial area, doesn't allow it to, it still allows it to live on as long as it can.
Sure. You're not going to knock them down, right?
Right.
But there is a lot on, for sale on Front Street, and I just wondered if, you know, if somebody's going to be able to build, obviously, it won't be like a traditional old craftsman or whatever. But if somebody wants to build a single-family house there, they can still do that.
So no. So again, we want to make sure we have a holistic view of what the city and the vision. And so currently today, you could not build a single-family home in a general commercial zone because it's been deemed not appropriate for that area. And so the ones that are there existing today can go on to exist. But again, you want homes to go where the homes are. And so this is a big priority for our city is housing. And so we want to put housing where the housing has been deemed or identified as where it belongs, so to speak. And so in these, the area, again, like this downtown area, this has been deemed as a mixed-use development area for retail and those types of things. And so the commercial has been identified as being more appropriate in this area than a single-family home. Does that say multifamily can't go in there? No.
No.
But, but it will allow those historical homes to live on and just not have, not allow somebody to build a single house there. If they want to do a duplex, or if they wanted to do something like that, that'd be allowed.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
I do have, I do have one additional, one additional question on his point. And so if we have a single-family home, and they decide that they are going to put in a recording studio, make a recording studio business or something, some business, would they then lose the ability to then revert it back to a single-family use?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that aspect. And I had three questions in your, the public review draft, page three under land use. I keep seeing the word buffered, and it looks like that there's it, I'm not understanding what, it's a, for things to be buffered or appropriately buffered, appropriate buffering. Is there some definition of that, or is that going to be on a case-by-case basis?
That's, that's language that is, what you want in the general plan is broad direction without the handcuffs of a restriction of a specific number, unless it's a appropriate. And so the general plan is implemented by the zoning code. And so this is where we're looking for the, the city's eventual update of the zoning code to take that in consideration to then say, okay, what are the appropriate setbacks between certain uses? Or do we need to introduce some new standard that says, okay, between these two types of uses, you need to have not just a physical separation, but some sort of berming or something like that. So in the land use element, we use the broader term of buffering without being precise about how big or exactly even what mechanism is used. But just the idea that there needs to be some sort of separation between uses or conditions in order to provide compatibility.
So in some cases, it could just be a measurement.
Mm hmm.
In other cases, it could be a block wall.
Right, right. Might be a sound wall.
Sound wall.
It might be a, just a landscaped berm or, or hey, we have 200 feet between this and this. You already have some buffering right now, like with where cannabis is allowed around schools or churches.
Now, so is that going to change how we see projects come to us?
So this is a policy decision. So basically what, what you're, again, this is the vision of what you want the general plan to be. So what you're saying is in general, and I, I don't, I'm not using a pun here, but in general, you want land use buffers to occur. So right now, that policy is lived through the zoning code. And so what you would do is if you want to reinforce, if you want to change the, the actual distance we're talking about. So this is, um, this is, I want to live a better life. All right. And then it's, how do I want to live a better life? I want to eat healthier. I want to go running. That, the goat, that the actions are actually in the zoning code. This is just the, the policy statement that allows us to do what we need to do in the zoning code. So the zoning code's actually being updated. That's going to be coming forward. We've got a grant for that too. We're very fortunate. But we have to do, we had to do this first to get the policy to understand what in your minds, or get a recommendation from the planning commission and then got, and then approval from the council of how you want the vision of the city. And that policy right there basically states that you want land use buffers that require prefer buffering between the commercial manufacturing and other land use designations. So that's, that's the guidance. That's the guiding light. Now we would do that action through the zoning code. And so there is some that are like, you know, you gotta be, if you're within, if residential zoning and a commercial zoning are right next to each other, there's got to be a distance separation, all these different things. So you will avoid any kind of interruptions that are created from the commercial use. And so the actual distance requirements that you're talking about exists in the zoning code. And that will be coming forward for you. But this gives us the direction to be able to do that, the, the implementation at the zoning code level.
And as a practical example, what it helps this body do is when somebody comes in and says, all right, Pastor has given me grief. He says, I have to separate my buildings by this much. Why the heck do I even have to separate them at all? And then you say, ah, well, our general plan says you need appropriate land use buffering between this, this, and this. And so the general plan is that policy foundation that give, that, that says, well, we implement this through the zoning and the zoning determines this is the amount of buffering, but the concept of buffering is in there so that you can't get an argument that says, well, you know, I can be quiet and be next to this house. You know, we, we'll, we'll, we'll stop our operations at this time and it'll, it gives you the authority and the, the direction to say, no, 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 we need to provide some sort of separation between these uses where by a physical or, or distance to ensure compatibility, not just hope for it.
Okay. Um, the next question I had under on page five of this document, roadway configuration. Says, it says retain current speed limits on a roadway configuration in the second line. Yeah, it says retain current speed limits. The question that I have is, I mean, there are times when traffic engineering studies are done to determine what the speed limits are. So I'm, I'm, I don't understand why we're stating that you need to retain them. So in other words, to me, that's saying, no, they can't be changed. We're not going to allow change.
You're absolutely, you're a hundred percent right that what speed limits are dictated by, aside from land use, because even though you can go fast in your residential neighborhood, they won't let you go more than 25 in general. But the roadway design and how safe it is, how fast, how safe, how safe it is to travel, the speed limit is what dictates whether or not Caltrans can set the speed limit. And so what we didn't want to do is have the city change its roadway design to be, to be larger because generally larger streets allow faster travel. And so the idea is we want to retain the speed limits we have, therefore keep the roadway as designed to match those speed limits. But if you have suggestions for Betty Rorting to make sure that people don't get confused with that, then we can.
I, I just don't see the reason why we're saying retain them because I mean, that's, I mean, we may have a street that because, I mean, I've seen where they, they start adding, it's open, it's all open. Well, then they start putting in businesses or whatever. Well, oh, we need to slow this traffic down. So it's an, it's basically.
The opposite of like, we might need to lower the.
It could go either way. I mean, but.
Madam Chair, Mayor. So the current, the current speed limit is set by a study and then it's adopted by council. So the current speed limit changes. I mean, I know the current speed limit changes with each adoption of that engineering study because it makes it the current speed limit. So, so see what I'm saying? So I know, but, but what it, what it does is, is when the council goes and listens to the traffic engineer study and, and adopt those new set of speed limits, that makes it the current speed limit. So what language?
Is just a guidance then. So you can go back in and change it.
The intent behind this policy language, which this is, this is where it's good to see, oh, that this is, it's not being interpreted this way, or there's confusion here. The intent was, we don't want traffic to speed up because somebody decided that, oh, this, we have this big roadway right of way that only has two lanes of travel right now. Let's put four lanes of travel just because, and I say that cavalierly, I mean, there, there'd be some sort of decision on why we need to do it. But it was like, okay, we, we want to, people are tired of waiting a little bit. Let's speed them through. And all of a sudden, the speed limit goes up because the roadway design now allows for faster travel.
Right.
Um, so the design, the, the intent of this language was let's ensure that traffic stays slower rather than faster on, on, on certain road, on, on those roadways, like stays the maximum as it is now, so that you don't have just everybody speeding even faster and faster. But it, if it's confusing, I don't see any problem taking it out. We already have.
And what you just said is what I was afraid that we're, that we're trying to hamper future growth and future roadways and that to, to, to speed limits that are obsolete. I mean, if, if engineering study says this roadway should be 45 when it's been 35, well, then that's, that's what the engineering studies are for, is to allow for the appropriate speed. That's what.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't see why we should have language that's telling us, well, we need to retain any speed limit that we currently have. That's what I'm reading. It's retain what we currently have, return, retain current speed limit. I don't see why we would be hampering, you know, future decisions may, that are based on engineering studies, traffic engineering.
Okay.
Okay. And then the, the third thing that I have is, and I noted this under the electric bike section, but the city of Needles, I didn't see any mention of something that the city of Needles is working hard to, to work out. And that's the, the traveling of however they're going to consider it, of side by side or, or off road vehicles that are going between residential areas and trails. And we've got this document and to me, to not even consider any language to support that, when and if it becomes available, I think is short sighted. So that I'm, I'm asking about, can we add something in there that deals with what's going to, what we're anticipating to be allowed for, for these, you know, side by side, the off road vehicles?
When you say off road vehicles, are you talking about ATVs? Are you talking about electric bikes?
TVs.
Okay. But ATVs I think are governed already by the, by the, not DMV.
Vehicle code.
Vehicle code. Thank you. And they, I, I think there's already regulations in place. They can use public roadways.
Well, not.
Yeah.
Not in the city of Needles. Not yet. Is, is something changed?
So, okay. So off highway motor vehicles. So let me back up. There was a state law that was passed by the legislature for a pilot program to study our ability for off highway motor vehicles. And so it's a, it's a pilot program. So it's not, it's not set in stone yet because we still have to go through the processes. Now, this document is, is a long-term document. So this is a long-term guiding light. So we wouldn't want to put something in there that's short term into a long-term document. Cause as you know, this is the last time we did this was 36 years ago. So if, and Colin pointed it out, if as soon as it becomes state law, if, if the pilot proof program goes through, and I'm going to be very optimistic that it will, that they will extend it beyond the five-year program that's, it's gone into place, then we would, you know, want to take a look at that and then put it into our land use and transportation because then, then it's a long-term goal. It's forever. But this is supposed to outlive a lot of things. You know, this document is a guiding light that's supposed to outlive. And, and you only have to, I mean, technically you want to update them every time a new, a new significant change that comes along, like the off highway motor vehicles. So once that comes into play, then we would want to take a look at updating this transportation element because it's, it's set in stone. At this point in time, it's a pilot program that we're trying to implement as a long-term program.
You know, what you could do is add it as an action, an implementation item that's in there. You have under, underneath the goals and the policies, you have implementation actions. And we could word something that just basically says, continue to explore how to appropriately deal with off highway vehicles. And that way, it's just kind of like a tickler to say, hey, you got to continue to do this. Oh yeah. And, and you can always add a policy. You can always change a policy in here. You know, these aren't supposed to be routinely changed, as Patrick's saying, but they can be updated whenever is appropriate. But I think we could address what you're talking about through an implementation item that still is in the general plan that says, hey, we, this is an issue here. We got to keep abreast of it.
That, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you. I'm done.
Hey, anything else, Bob?
No, I'm done.
Okay. I have a question and a resident had asked me to bring this up and talk about the North Needles properties. They're larger lots and some of them are five acre and then they split, they do the lot split. And this may go under more zoning than, than general plan. But, you know, to make sure in, in those lots and development out there that they're maintain the acre and a half lots to accommodate their water and sewer accommodations because they don't have cities, you know, water and stuff yet. But that might be more into zoning. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah. So the, the city adopted the local area management plan, which states that in order to have a septic and a well on the same parcel, there has to be a one acre requirement. Okay? All right. Now, in reality, that might not work. And so at the point where, and again, that was an engineer and it depends on the configuration.
Right.
It, it, and so at any point where a subdivision like that would come to the city, it would go, to answer your question, you are correct in the sense that they would go through the planning process, a parcel map would be identified anytime you take one parcel and subdivide them into two. There's a process where we have the development review committee. And so we would take a look at that. You'd have to show in that parcel map when you are doing some, if it's more than four acres, you got to do a track map. Basically you got to make sure you follow the state laws for the subdivision map act. But as long as, so as long as when we go through the DRC process, you have to show if you've got utilities, or if you've got electric, you got to show us how you're going to get that on the.
And that would determine then the size of the lot or what, like if you had a five acre parcel, you wanted to subdivide it. I mean, it could be the one and a fourth, but that would also depend on the location and then what they were putting on that lot, I would guess.
Right. The, yeah, the one acre lots.
Might be a question for down the road, but I, I did want to bring it up. So.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Barbara?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Barrett.
Um, I had a technical issue on more of a legal kind of thing. Section seven on the resolution down at the bottom where all these chicken scratches are. We have language that Patrick indicated to me is rather standard in the industry about the custodian of records. And we have an identification of an individual who's going to be called the community development, development manager as the, being designated as the custodian of all of the documents that have to do with everything we're doing on the general plan. Um, generally speaking, let's say I'm going to sue the city. So I want all these documents. I'm going to send out a subpoena, may notice take deposition, whatever, to the custodian of records of the city on all of this information. And generally speaking, the civil code dictates custodian of records, the subpoena forms we have in Sacramento are all custodian of record language. So I'm proposing that we somehow remove this designation here of community development manager and refer to it as custodian of records. There should be one custodian of records responsible for all city documents. That generally it's the city clerk Dale. Hmm. Okay.
Yes.
So. And no other mini god is available or appropriate. So I am requesting that that be changed. Is that a problem?
No, I, no, it is not.
Okay. So I'll leave the drafting mess up to you because I kind of made a mess of it here. Okay. So I'll let you figure that out. I do have one other question. I think there's only one. I have a note to myself to read all the law that you cited in here. I haven't done that yet. Um, when we went over this in the first session that we had with planning commission and I had a question that I'm not sure. I got, I got an answer from you, but I'd like to ask again, because we can't get the municipal code online, so I can't access it readily without driving this young lady crazy. Okay? Asking for, can I have a copy of this other section over here? Not even knowing what I'm talking about. Um, at the end of the prior table of uses in our municipal code, where all the table of, and this looks totally different and it's extensive and it's beautiful. Okay? But we had a section that I referred to and I didn't have, I didn't pull that for tonight because I knew you'd remember the conversation we had. At the end of the table, there was one of these sections that said, that referred to the city planner. Okay. You remember?
Yes.
And my question was, as I recall, if I can state it correctly or not, does the city planner have authority to decide whether or not the general commercial or C2 is what I was addressing that night, which is now going to be the issue I'm concerned about at PUD designation. So it won't necessarily apply to what I was thinking about. But can the city planner make a recommendation to take a general commercial zone area and recommend to the planning commission or whomever? Have to go through maybe engineers or whomever first, that, that is still compatible with a project going in next to it that is zone CRR, our free CRR combo, or some other designation, when it still fits the entire project? Now, I understand from that section, the city planner has some authority, but it wasn't clear because I didn't have the whole paragraph. I didn't have the following page. So it wasn't clear what kind of authority they have. But it seems to me that if, if a developer comes into the city and wants to develop and he's looking at two or three different zones, he's already bought his property and took, and rolled the dice that it's going to work or not. But the city is going to be advising him, this is not going to happen, or it's a good chance it will happen. City planner makes the recommendation if that's appropriate. And he proceeds based on that recommendation by the city. I don't know at what juncture before he spends $500,000 in city fees or, or after. Okay? And we end up with it in our laps. Now, if it, does the city, can the city planner have that kind of authority to make that decision?
So there's, there's two possible scenarios that I think.
Okay.
And that's kind of.
Be a mind reader here.
So there's one where let's just say So there's one where, let's just say, uh, somebody buys this property, it's currently zoned C2. Um, so they're, hopefully did their due diligence on what C2 allows. Sometimes you get speculative folks who go, well, I've got an idea, the zoning's not there, but I'm gonna argue successfully that we need to change the zone. Ultimately, zoning is really, it's a discretionary action that only, a change in zoning that only, uh, after going through you, the city council gets to make. Um, city staff is charged with processing the application and making a recommendation or for or against. Um, so that's, that is literally their job to evaluate whether or not a change in zone is appropriate or not. Um, if you're talking about, um, a scenario where somebody is trying to evaluate what is the best change in zone? And a developer or a property owner comes in and says, hey, I want to change my property to X-zone. What do you think I should do? That is something where the city staff, and I'll, I shouldn't be speaking too much here for city staff, but they, that is their job to field questions and to say, well, here's, what are you trying to do? Okay, let's, we'll tell you what zone allows this and what zone allows that. You know, as an, as an absurd extreme example, if somebody bought a residential lot and says, I want to put general manufacturing in here, that's a pretty easy question. They could say, nah, I don't think you're gonna, the winds are not in your favor there. But they, they can't deny the person submitting the application. They can't say, well, I disagree with you, therefore I'm not even processing anything. As long as somebody submits a complete application, they still have to take it through and they make their recommendation to, to this body. Um, is that?
I don't think I'm thinking of a zone change.
Okay, so it's, it's an existing.
Nothing less.
If, if it's an existing, I think what you and I were talking about is you have a parcel that's zoned C2. I want to do a, a use that's not literally named in this permitted use table. Who gets to decide whether or not my proposed use is?
No.
About, no?
The research I did on C2, some cities, some counties or whatever, because I splattered all over the place. Some of them have a list a mile long. It's like four pages long and different businesses that can go into C2, which is general commercial, right? So all these different businesses can go into that category. If there is, what if there is a CRR next to it?
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be residential.
Mm-hmm.
And this is C.
What?
Commercial residential, CRRs.
CRR, commercial residential, resort.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
Are you asking about compat- who makes that decision on what's compatible to be next to each other?
Well, I would assume that it's obviously compatible because a CRR is commercial and C2 is commercial.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, and, and, and one point that is, is good to reinforce is this body and then the city council after that is literally making the choice of what land uses are compatible next to each other.
Right.
Because i- in adopting the recommending for adoption for the land use plan, you are making a decision about, we have a two-family next to C2. Is that appropriate? Is this, are we okay with this land use pattern? And once, once you've set that, then you're bound by this, what you allow in the zoning code. Now, in the zoning code, you still can have some adjustments, the, the buffering language, uh, is in there. And you could overhaul some of the parts of the zoning code to say, yeah, I know we put the red next to the pink. But when it's this specific use next to something else, yeah, we need some buffering between those two. So that's, that's, that's how.
You answered my question. When you said C2 is commercial, CRR is commercial. And we have a list now in other, not our, uh, ordinances, like we don't have a mile-long list. I don't care.
Yeah, it's a quarter mile. Oh, no, it's, it's the four, four pages or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But we do have a list.
Oh, yeah.
It was the first time I think I saw it. That's not long.
And, and those, those I just, I, we only show you the excerpts that are changing. We don't show you the, because otherwise we give you a sixty-page document.
Okay, well, the lists I've seen have been quite long.
Yes.
Just about every business you can imagine.
Yeah.
So those are permissible in C2, general commercial, okay? And we are, there's a lot of general commercial in, in this new plan, which I'm all for. I think that's great. I was concerned about one existing that is going in now, hopefully, okay? That is an example where I couldn't figure out why this and why that. And I won't go there because you just answered my question. They're compatible, okay? So, um, I think that was it. I was looking for, what I was looking, what I started out with was this municipal code that I don't have a copy of.
Right.
Um, giving the city more authority to recommend what would be a good project for a developer, recommend to us first. And that would ultimately go to city council, of course. And I'm not sure. What I'm seeing is recommendations sometimes that are not acceptable to the city. And I don't see guidelines, sufficient guidelines for the city to be making the decision nay. Because I always want to say, yay, try something, at least get to planning commission and let us decide. Instead of saying nay when it's a close call or, and who should have that, that authority? That that be making those decisions when a developer comes to town.
Yeah, at, at, at jurisdictions, cities, city or planning staff supposed to interact with somebody who's interested in application and, and they are supposed, your, your, your city staff is supposed to say, this is our initial opinion of what your, your idea is, both to not waste their time, but also to make sure they know, well, this is the way city staff feel, feels about it. If we, if you want to submit something that can convince us otherwise or you wanna, uh, spend the time and money to go forth, there's always that gray area of are they being overly discouraging or not? And, and, you know, that's something I think you just see if there's a pattern.
Thank you very much. I'm, I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions by the commission? If not, um, I'd like to open the public hearing.
One moment, Linda, this is Will Bosbum. I wonder if I might ask one quick question of Colin.
Absolutely.
To go, to go back to the underpass, from what I'm seeing here, the decision is to have it be multi-use traffic as well as bicycling and pedestrians.
I've been locked out, Patrick. Advance to the. There, oh, no, no, keep going to the, the, on K Street Underpass. There we go.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we have initially, uh, two options. One was emergency vehicle only and then pedestrian and bike, just to provide enhanced connectivity for, for folks that they didn't, as a pedestrian and bicyclist, have to figure out how to walk or, or ride miles out of their way. Um, and then we had one with the non-vehicular, uh, uh, non-emergency vehicular access as you see on, on there. So that was, and the, we've got a, a large number of people saying, hmm, we've already, we've already kind of figured out what we want there. In large part, negotiations are going well. We want to make sure that we have vehicular access open to there. And then we want to m- make sure that we don't lose the opportunity to make sure that pedestrian and bicycle access is safe. Because people, once you open that back up, people will walk and ride their bikes through there. It really matters whether or not you can make it safe.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Okay, thanks, Will. Okay, if there are no other questions, I would like to open the public hearing for public comments. Please come up and state your name and address, please.
Ruth Musser Lopez, Needles, California. Uh, I thank you very much for what you did, your effort, whatever, and the staff and council for getting that map changed to include the cemetery that I brought up the last time you met. Um, in the public use area. And I'm not really sure what public, public use all includes because I think there might be like a quasi-public use that might involve nonprofits like the museum that we would like to put right, there's a house there that we would like to, uh, turn into a gateway to the cemetery that I was hoping to also get that included in public use or uh, maybe some light, if it had to be light commercial or whatever, but I didn't see that that was also included. And I'm hoping that you might be able to do something to, uh, advance that idea. Um, because it'd be difficult later on. Uh, the other thing is the parcel just south of the cemetery is basically a buffer for the cemetery. It's a, I brought it up earlier in public comments that it's a spreading zone for that water that's coming out from the, the opening in the dam, which releases, um, water every time it rains. And if that spreading area, spreading zone was not there, that water would just, if it was housing as it is designated now, multi-housing and it's just streets, that water would be gushing down the road and, and, uh, be even more impactful onto the road. Um, so if that could be made into an open area, as I had mentioned last time, um, that would be the only open area that I observed on the map that is east of the freeway. Uh, all the open areas basically west of the freeway next to the desert. And so this housing area uh, down in this city, uh, basically downtown, um, historic district. Uh, there's an open area for, uh, basically for, uh, walking dogs or kids playing. Or in this case, it's like quads that was mentioned before. They use that culvert to access an open area on the other side of the freeway. And so that would be, that's really something that needs to be looked at for, um, a bike path. As you were bringing up that before, that you didn't really have in your, your plan was um, be something for that, for making bike, bike paths, uh, quads, get out into the open area without being on a road. They use that now for that purpose, but there's nothing in the plan that designates that, even though it'd be ea- an easy change and it would, um, actually enhance your plan significantly. Uh, I thank you for these considerations and, uh, appreciate any help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, we have a Leslie Sib- Simons, Simmons, who's raised her head.
Yes, go ahead, Leslie. Name, uh, state your name and address, please.
I'm mute.
Can you hear us? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I have some property, um, south of town. It's designated as, um, light manufacturing. And it's, uh, but the, uh, general manufacturing. But if someone were to want to create a planned unit development in that area, specifically right at the point where the property line goes north and then turns directly to the east, that's the corridor of our property. I've been spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to make it more agreeable. But that is, it's very much a mixed-use kind of concept, not all office or whatever that allows. How difficult would it be to, um, have the city make that adjustment? Not, I mean, not necessarily right now, but calling this light manufacturing, all of a sudden, any housing is out of the question.
Colin, I could refer that to you. I'm, I'm guessing it looks more like a zoning, uh, I mean, obviously to look at this situation, but.
If, uh, Madam Chair, I recommend, let's go through all the public comments and then we can come back and, and address these one by one.
Question, okay.
Can I, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
The, um, if you're going straight up from that property line to hit what they call highway commercial, that's a wash. Uh, there's very little, maybe a little sliver that could be commercial. I think that needs to be taken out. It's literally a hole with an overpass, highway overpass, bridge. But, okay, go ahead.
Is that, do you have anything else?
Well, the, the, in two thousand fifteen, this property was, uh, apparently designated single-family residential. And before that, it was open space. And all of a sudden now, it's, it's, I mean, I just find that kind of problematic how much it's changed to go from designated a single family to light manufacturing, which basically cuts out housing. Okay, I'm.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, Gerald Tayis has a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Gerald.
Uh, my name's Jerry Tayis. I'm a resident here in Needles, also a real estate broker. And, um, I happen to be one of the people invested in one of the cannabis businesses. Uh, anyway, I, um, I, uh, I'm looking at this, uh, rezoning process as a, as a great tool in some ways to, uh, knock down some barriers to, uh, development here in Needles. And, uh, uh, Patrick mentioned that I'd submitted a letter. Uh, uh, I want to talk about that for a second. There's a number of, um, owners in there, including myself, who, uh, who want to make their land, uh, available as as, for as many uses as possible, you know? Uh, and I think this list here I have of, of those, um, owners is fairly representative of, of a lot of people in town who live in Needles, who have had property, who would like to sell it or develop it, uh, you know, make it more attractive to those developers. And, and I, and I think most of us agree that to improve Needles, uh, we're gonna have to, uh, increase our population, among other things, we're gonna have to attract development. So it seems to me that, um, we should consider allowing, um, that, um, general commercial zoning to some of these people who, uh, who, who want to make something happen. And, uh, I realize there's, um, you know, very, very legitimate, uh, reasons to, to separate zoning. I mean, but, but I think in Needles, we're in a position where we should, um, you know, allow more uses. And this general, uh, commercial seems to be ideal in that it allows a number of commercial uses and some residential. Um, so as I go down that list of different owners, uh, they've all, uh, asked me to, um, you know, speak up on their behalf and try to, um, uh, you know, make this last-minute request. I mean, uh, let's take, for example, a, a couple of these guys who, who got started early, early on and requested a zone change. Well, just in, uh, six months, a year's time, a lot of things have happened. Uh, that, that are of enormous impact. Okay, let's, let's consider the cannabis industry that's, uh, provided a lot of revenue for, for Needles. Uh, it's created a lot of jobs and it's actually increased our population. It's helped property values go way up. Um, in fact, rents are incredibly high. Uh, with that last round of low interest rates, we, uh, were able to sell a lot of homes in Needles, which, which we haven't been able to do in, in recent real estate cycles. So, um, or, or I think we're about to lose that cannabis industry. There's several of those businesses that are for sale. Uh, I know personally that there are some that are struggling and, uh, and there's some cutbacks and, and, and number of employees. And it, so we're gonna have a little negative impact from that. So we're right back, in some ways, right where we started. We need to incentivize, um, you know, people to, to come here. And I think this, um, this general commercial is, is a good idea. Um, I kind of got the impression from the conversation earlier that, uh, that the city's pretty much gonna stick with, uh, with that, um, interactive map and the zoning designations. And I, I just have to, uh, say that up in the Lily Hill area and Bailey Avenue area, uh, several of these guys pretty much own all that land, you know, along Bailey and along Lily Hill. And, um, they don't really want to get stuck with it the rest of their life. And, uh, at least two or three of them have had properties in escrow and, uh, the buyers backed out because they got the feedback from the city that, no, we're not gonna do that there or not on my watch. And that was, that, that's all fine and good, but it's a missed opportunity, not just for those individuals, but for, for Needles, you know? Um, th- th- these are legal jobs in the cannabis industry and, uh, you know, it was a missed opportunity. But back to the C2, uh.
Madam Chair, we have a ordinance that requires three minutes per speaker.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, uh, that Dale was not using the clock. I'm sorry.
That's okay. There.
Okay.
You want to wrap it up, Jerry? I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, if I may, I would just say, uh, these guys have skin in the game. They've been paying a lot of taxes for a lot of years. And to some degree, they haven't been able to sell their properties because of the zoning and, and we have in place.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public, uh, comment? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing. I, I will follow back on Colin, the question that Ms. Simmons had, only because if I'm correct, that would be more of a zoning issue that she has? Or?
Yes, okay. Yeah, Ms. Simmons, Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Simmons, will you please be more specific? Do you, do you have a, as, let me pull it up on the TV and you can give me generally, where, where are we talking about here?
Uh, down below. Go down.
Anne Sebola.
No, 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 that, that, that. I was talking about Section 17 down by the airport.
Okay.
I mean, the Anne Sebola, I can ask that question of something else. But this is a decision to make zoning kind of have a very heavy impact on my property. Where that point is, where your arrow is a little above, see where the point of the city limit is? Yes, that's Section 17. Okay? I have been working for quite some time on some way of using that property and the one next to it going to the highway. It goes from the point, that point to, could you get rid of that?
He talked the.
To the point of the red, which is in a hole, the lower part, that, that kind of V-shaped sort of thing, that's actually retaining wall leading up to an overpass, a bridge over the highway for a major wash. So you're not going to be putting commercial in there of any sort. It's a hole. So what, if down the road, and I'd prefer it was to the one to the west, too, that, I mean, I know the airport's there, but what is to stop us from being a planned development? Or what is the other one? All those different designations that are much more flexible. You know, you're basically saying, do nothing but build offices and, you know, light manufacturing, whatever that is. Whereas I'm actually seeing five-acre parcel individual homes. I mean, how is that going to absolutely stop me? I mean, not me personally, but if Jerry is involved in this, we, you know, I mean, all of a sudden we've become kind of not much of anything. It's both sides of the highway, by the way.
But wouldn't, wouldn't that go back into she could apply for a different zone depending on what the project would be? And, and this is public comment, so we really can't take too much time on it.
Right.
I know, I understand.
And, and you could, you know, come down to the city and, and sit out.
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah. What's that?
I live in San Rafael.
But.
I can, I can speak to the, I can speak to the.
The process of having.
The process and kind of the, the thinking behind the, the colors on the map and, and the categories.
Yeah, just to share an idea of where she can go and, and have some questions answered.
Yeah, well, it's something, so for, for the planning commission, if, if you, you know, anybody who's asking for this map to change, you, you can take that into consideration. Once, if it goes passed through the city council and they adopt it and it doesn't change as someone has requested, then they would bring forth an application for a zoning change and a general plan amendment. And then the body would be, the bodies would essentially reconsider the issue, perhaps more informed by a proposed project. The reason why that area is largely identified as, as light manufacturing is one, proximity to the airport, even though, yes, it's not a, a, a large airport. But when we were looking at the overall city pattern and saying, well, where should we be encouraging general and light manufacturing uses, let's push it down towards the south away from residential. And so introducing the opportunity to do residential in that area is, would be inconsistent with that approach. And so we're just trying to kind of isolate the, the, the uses that might be inconsistent with residential uses further towards the south. Whereas the airport, as long as you're not building up too high, isn't really concerned with, with, they're concerned with residential uses, but they're not concerned with non-residential uses.
Would it, would it be helpful to write to the city council and say, could we maybe look at this differently? Because last I actually spoke to the city was open space. But yeah, maybe general commercial is what I'd prefer. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's all very lovely up until, you know, that blob next to us of dark blue, yuck.
Okay, well, it's like, Leslie, then you could, you could, if this were to go through the way it is tonight, you know, then you would have, you would have to get something from the planning at the city requesting that you want them to look at it or to zone it differently.
Okay, I guess I need to write a letter or something in response.
Okay. All right. So if, and does the commission have any other discussion with staff or questions what we discussed? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You want to read the resolution, Bob?
Yeah, the, I'm trying to find.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Resolution Number 2-15-2023 PC. Recommend approving it. I, as I spoke and, and there was answers before with regards to the, the speed limits. So change the wording there so that, that traffic studies would allow for any sort of changes. And then the implementation item for OHVs that was mentioned. That's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
And one more, Madam Chair, with the, the Barbara Beard, Commissioner Beard's comment regarding the custodian.
Yes, and Barbara.
Yes, yes. There were three.
Those are the three amendments I wrote, no.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, no opposition. So it passes and then this will go on to the council. So thank you, everybody, for the participation and questions and citizens for taking part in it. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we'll move on to the board requests. Michael?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Barbara?
I had about eight of them during the week, but I can't remember one of them right now, so no, nothing passed.
Bob?
Nothing, thank you.
Charles?
Nothing.
Will?
Nothing here either.
Okay, and I didn't have anything. Anything from the manager or?
Yes, Madam Chairperson.
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for being late or maybe just in time. But I had. What I understand is we now have a draft general plan ready to go to council. You don't know what an accomplishment that is. And we should all feel very good about what you've done. Because you've, you've created what the US Supreme Court has called the impermanent constitution of the city. So there's a plan for handling growth and development. And, and nobody has been able to accomplish that since 1985. So, and congratulations to Colin for the work he's done. And for the citizens that gave us their opinions, wishes, desires and the workshop and whatever. But what I would like to do is just, I want to hit a couple of things that I would like to work with the commission on. And one is, I'm trying to organize a tour of city facilities. Now, and what I mean by that is, have you ever wondered what goes on at the wastewater treatment plant? Well, but, but, but you're going to find it fascinating. Have you, there are $30 million of capital projects are going to be born. And because Patrick and they deal with them on a daily basis, you know, we refer to it as the water treatment plant and the manifold and all the, but I would like to create a vision in your mind's eye about what I'm talking. So you can see where the water treatment plant is going to go and what its objectives are and what the construction schedule is of it. Because there may come a day where you have to make a decision or have input on that. And I, I would like for you to have some sense of, and, you know, the little Jimmy Buffett song says, don't try and describe the ocean if you've never seen it. If you have an interest, then we would love to give you a tour of all the projects that are being maintained. The Lily Hill Booster Station, the Elsbury Booster Station, the new location for a 1.5 million gallon reservoir behind Gates. We just did $675,000, replaced every pole up in the vistas, our pole. So that improves system reliability. And not only that, we took them out of the middle of the alleys, put them on the side. And so the alleys trend, you can go across the path. All right. So I would also like to schedule at perhaps your next meeting, the fate of the Colorado River is being decided right now. There, there is seven million acre feet of water that's released out of Lake Mead. California gets 4.4 million acre feet of that, by far the largest share. Everybody else had, Nevada and Arizona have had, have had to take a couple of months ago, 21% cut in their allocation. California had, was not. And the reason is that we have what senior water rights to, under the Water Rights Law, Arizona and Nevada get cut off completely from the river before California has to give up anything because of the water rights, which date back to the 1800s. Whereas Arizona didn't have water rights to the 1960s. And the law is your water rights are based on when you applied for them or awarded them. So we're in an unenviable position legally. But the federal government has said, listen, either you guys come together and make a decision on how you're cutting back, because we got to go from seven to five million acre feet of consumption.
Annually?
Yes. So.
Why?
Because the flow is less, the, the climate change or whatever has happened that had, there's, there's a lower flow level in the Colorado now than there has been. And we're, you know, in now the fourth year of the most serious drought on America. So the feds will have said, either you find a way or we will prescribe. California said, we can, we could cut back 400,000 acre feet or 10% of our allocation. But we will not go below that because we are not going to interfere with senior water rights. And if that means Arizona has none, or they get cut off completely, or Nevada gets cut off completely, that's what the Supreme Court upheld in 1960, was the senior water rights. So the Bureau of Reclamation, who's the water master for the Colorado River, could make a decision at any time about what, what's going, what's going on. But California has held steadfast that we will voluntarily cut 400,000. But no more. And that's been signed off by the governor's office at State of California. So the Biden administration needs to figure out what it's going to do. So what, what I want to do is just give you a 30-foot, 30,000-foot view of what the decisions being made are and why and what the implications. The punchline is Needles is not affected one gallon by the requirements.
Why?
Because of our senior water rights.
Okay.
And we have probably all in, including the credits back, we probably have 1,500 acre feet of water rights. We are not using all of our water allocation.
I got to water those trees.
Well, but what happens is, in theory, it's being, that water's not being consumed, so it's being held back at Lake Mead. Not that we can never go get it, but we, we conserved beginning in 2015. And we've never gone back to the water use that we had before 2015.
I thought it was my understanding that all our drinking water is well water in the city of Needles and that the drinking water wasn't being drawn out of the river.
Well, it, it, no, that's not true, but let me tell you what is true. So here is, here are the mountains, down to the south. And rain falls here and it moves towards the river. And eventually underground moves into the river, becomes part of the river. Our wells are in the floodplain down by the river. So we sink a well and it goes into that aquifer, which is part of the river. So that, that aquifer is fed by the river itself and by rainwater coming downhill on the river. So we don't pull it directly out of the flowing river like an irrigation pump would. But instead we tap into what's called the bright line. And that is at what the river level is today. The feds regulate everything going back inland at that level. They consider everything below the level of the river today as their water. Now, the water coming off the mountains, that's different. But everything, so we do pull it out of the river, but not out of the moving.
The flowing.
Get the renault.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, we do get it from the Colorado. But it's not out of the moving body of water. It's out of the seepage and saturation that the river creates.
So we're subject to any cuts just as well, even though it might not be directly from the river itself, but from the underground, the groundwater that's fed by the river.
But what is, what California has proposed does not affect our water volume available to us at all. Now, the feds could step in and they're going to have to do something because the state's going to improve. So the ultimate point is, bring you a simplified, but, but a meaningful presentation of the issues of the river.
You said 30,000-foot view, so we're going to go in a plane?
No, no, I meant, I meant a high-level, because I could turn this into an eight-hour class or a 10-minute presentation, so I'm going to give.
So what is that going to look like if the feds do it? If California won't deal with it, the feds are not going to. So what is that gonna look like if the feds do it, if California won't deal with it, the feds are not going to?
Well, the feds are gonna, the feds are gonna have to decide. Whether to cut off Arizona and Nevada. And let California keep its water rights. Or to violate a Supreme Court decision in nineteen sixty-four. Which recognized those water rights. So the federal government's bumping into themselves. And, uh, let me give you an example, in unincorporated, uh, Mojave County today. You can't get a building permit for anything. Because they had to take a twenty-one percent cut. And in Arizona, much like you have to get a will serve letter from the city. You have to provide the land use agency in Mojave County with a letter from the water provider. That says that they can guarantee you a one hundred year supply of water. With this cutback. So all, what's already been done, now the estimate is that at least Arizona's got to take another thirty-five percent cutback. Within the next few months. Already Bullhead has, uh, I noticed they have recently adopted. Alternative day watering, you can't water during the day, all those. Water police things that people talked about here that I refuse to participate in, instead. The city cut back on its water use at all of its properties, ball fields, parks. But it is, the, the, the news is tightening on the whole of water issue.
Are you giving this presentation at the utility?
Yes, yes, and city council, but I, I wanted to make that available here because. You all need to understand the role and the value, because if we can't, as a water agency. Can't certify to X Y Z developer. That we have adequate water for them now and into the future, we can't approve their development permits. Much like Arizona says the same thing, just in different language.
Does this include the Lower Colorado River?
Which, which, Bob, is a good point. Shortly after two thousand eight, I think. There was a dirt canal that runs parallel to the, uh, the, the International Board. And that was used to convey water on into Coachella Valley. And it was dirt lined, so, you know, half or I don't, some large percentage seeped into the ground. And then that was drawn out of the ground by farmers on the Mexican side of the river. So, the California Water Agency's paved the concrete line that canal. And it created. Ten thousand acre feet a year. Of water that wasn't seeping out and outside the system. So, that water is, we have some rights to that water as well. Uh, as participant in that. But it is, there's a, there's gonna be a bunch of news articles, there're gonna be a bunch of, and I, I just wanted to share. That with you, because some of you live on the river. We all enjoy the river, and, uh, we don't wanna see our supply cut one bit.
Federal government's been discussing it for a couple of years, threatening all of us.
But they. In order to do what six of the seven states want to do, you have to take it from California. And California's not budging.
We have perfected rights.
That's right.
Well, can they take away, if we've got, like you said, an, like an allotment? That we're not using it? Can they take that, that we're not using?
Could they, yes.
I mean, you know.
If they tinker. With the, the water rights which are recognized in the nineteen sixty-four U S Supreme Court decision.
I don't see the Supreme Court overturning that, not this one.
They don't care though.
But I see from what I, I've read is that if nothing's done. If Lake Mead turns into what they call a dead pool, it's all gonna be irrelevant. Because that means no water will flow to us at all, as far as I understand, it means no water flows over the dam. And everything comes down from Lake Mead, does it not?
That's correct, it comes out of, beginning in Wyoming and Colorado, snow melt. Uh, then it goes through Lake Powell. And then into Lake Mead, and then into behind Davis Dam, and then behind the Parker. So, yeah, and, and not only that, the worst part to me is the dead pool means. No hydropower. Now, for your information, we pay about three cents a kilowatt for hydropower. We pay about eight and a half cents for what's called brown power, coal, nuclear gas generated power. And wind and solar cost about thirteen or thirty-five cents per kilowatt. So we have, if we're not able to get that hydropower. We have to start paying eight and a half cents for brown power. So we all have an interest in keeping the dams functioning as power generation. But also, it completely turns the fishery upside down. Of a farmer's ability to provide, uh, crops down in Imperial and Palaberty Valley. Uh, it's all, it's all kicked in the head.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
Just for some context, the law, uh, was written, the law of the river came out in the nineteen twenties. The reason there was a Superior Court judgment in nineteen sixty-four is because Arizona sued California. Wanting more of their share and saying you were getting too much, et cetera, and they wanted more, so they were. They, they. That's why that Supreme Court happened so much later. The, just an interesting point to know that when, before the law was actually enacted. There were studies done to determine the allotment. And the law of the river divided into four northern states and then three down. And those allotments were decided on studies of precipitation and snowpack. Way back in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. Well, we know now that was, those were bumper years in precipitation. So, the way they came up with allotments and specifically, specific acre feet, not just percentages. But specific acre feet was based on what they, what they had determined. Hundred and twenty years ago. Turns out those were just really good water years, so it's just kind of interesting to have that perspective.
Yeah, it's, uh, anyway, it, there's some big issues that are gonna come down, uh, the road ads. I also wanna point out that, um, uh, we had a. A special event in town, we actually, we had three of them last Saturday. Uh, one of which, uh, they wanted to have a food truck. And we thought we had that all figured out. As it turns out, San Bernardino County not only requires a food handler's permit. For anybody in the food truck touching food. It's okay, cause you know, communicable diseases, yada, 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 but they also require a special events permit. Which is a couple hundred dollars. And then the city had a zoning permit. Which was about a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So collectively, that meant that. To, to make it work. So what Patrick did is he scanned through the ordinance. And the ordinance can easily be read to not require. A permit for a food truck for a one day event. If you're gonna have it two days or three days, yes, because we would need to look at traffic control. Make sure emergency access pad, so we are no longer. For a one day special event.
So that would eliminate what, the hundred and some dollar fee?
Yes. Still have to comply with the, uh, California environmental, the San Bernardino County Environmental Health Department fees. But. We will be approaching the county about, because they used to not require special. Permits here, uh, they might in San Bernardino, but here they weren't, and we need to get back to that. Uh, because we don't want fees and permits to impede. Community, because it was, there were three wonderful events. And Route sixty-six, there was a car show, there was a, another event, and. They're just valuable and good for the community. So anyway, we are no longer requiring a permit for a one day event, special event.
We compare the Arizona food permit to the California, uh, San Bernardino food, uh, permit. And see handlers and see if they're, if the county could. Use reciprocity or, you know, if they already have a permit in Arizona, if it could be used. Here in California, I can't believe that they're that much different, and just because it's across the river. Like, we're not asking for all of San Bernardino County, but just for local Needles events. Buying two permits and it, you know, to simplify things.
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's the overall answer. Is because a food truck from Bullhead or in Mojave County, they have to have a Arizona. Health Department permit.
Right.
But then, once they come across the bridge, they have to have a California permit.
I brought up that reciprocity when we processed.
We can't, we can't grant reciprocity.
The county could.
The county could, yes.
So I think that's what we need to push for.
One of the things, uh, in the last two weeks is, uh, Mayor Jernigan, Patrick and I met with. County Supervisor Don Rao, who's also the chairman of the Board of Supervisors this year. And, uh, we established a relationship with Jean and her. That we now have a way to present that case. And she's a, you, you wait till you meet her, she's a dynamo. She, she is a technical prisoner's, uh, person. So, uh, we're lucky that she's in a position that she's in now.
I don't know why I'm recall, I recall we discussed it, all of this at great length, and I was under the impression we already had it handled when we passed it. Up to city council.
But, but we cannot grant reciprocity of county permits.
Okay, I thought that they already had agreed.
What they did is they agreed that they would, because every food truck has to have a commissary. Which is where they store their food and whatever, Cal, uh, San Bernardino County agreed to recognize a commissary in Arizona. If it's in Arizona base.
That's what it was.
So we, they did, we get it, did get it there.
Step one.
Yeah, I know. You're right, once the door's open or the camel's nose is under the tent, watch out, you're a turtle. Okay, um. Also. The mayor had a chance to talk about the off-highway vehicle, uh. Lot of legislation that passed. And, uh, uh, we all agreed to make a, a redoubled effort to get. Caltrans to call the meeting with, where we can identify the trailheads, identify the streets where it's gonna be allowed and get on. Uh, so far, we've not been able to get Caltrans, attention to call the meeting. Cause they need to have a meeting between Caltrans, the city, C H P, or the county sheriff. To jointly identify what, what trailheads are gonna be accessed and what streets off-highway vehicles are gonna be allowed.
Do you have a preliminary mapping of that?
Yes.
That you can share with us?
Yes, we will, uh, actually, we, we had to prepare it. As they were considering the legislation, because our assembly member at the time wanted to know, what does this mean? What does it look like? So we have what we believe it should be, but, uh, it's not tested against, uh, the sheriff's office or.
So assuming Highway Patrol and the Sheriff's Department are all, and the city are all in agreement, that leaves Caltrans, there's one other one out there. Why do you, why is Caltrans not?
Caltrans has been assigned by the legislature to be the lead agent. But. The dynamics are different, it is, some in law enforcement don't want off-highway vehicles.
I think when we tried to do that, when I was on council where we ran, it was the sheriffs and C H P that didn't want it.
Well, because technically they're not street legal.
They're not, and the, the roads weren't wide enough, and they had all kinds of things.
But the legislature has made a dictate.
Yeah.
That in, in New York County or Bishop, and in Needles. They will allow.
Well, if they're street, if they can make them street legal, what's the difference?
Well, yeah, if they can, if they can make one that is street legal with turn signals and. Five mile bumper, but it has to be able to withstand.
Oh, they probably want airbags in them too.
Yeah, is that required on? But there's a, there's a, there's a, we got an exception. And legislature passed it, uh, council is gonna be going into goal setting. Uh, for establishing goals and objectives, mission and values for the organization within the next six or eight weeks. Your greatest contribution is turning in the general plan, because that lays out the vision for the future. We have, um, secured a planning commissioner's handbook. Which is a primer on planning law and, uh. Roles and responsibilities like fairness and what have you. Um, that's been prepared by the Institute for Local Government, which is part of the League of California Cities. Affiliated with the League of California Cities, and, uh, we're gonna be distributing that, uh, to you very soon.
Is that the same one we got after the planning commission meeting in Rantow?
That was the abbreviated version, we're giving you the full, the full thing.
Right, so you've already had.
We have, we have one. Right, haven't read it yet, but we, we have it.
Okay, but, uh, and then, uh. Uh, Patrick and I are working on laying out. A development processing, so we're inventorying every permit or approval that the county requires of. A developer or a prop, somebody wants to do something with a prop. And it will be a, a Gantt chart or a chart which identifies every step. And how long of those things that we play a role in should take. So we're gonna use it to set performance standards, for example. Uh, let me just say on building permits. That you have to, you have to fill out the application with accurate information and with authority to make an application. That you're either a property owner or the property owner is giving you something that allows us to determine that you're a deed authorized file. The first step is you submit your plans, the application, and it goes through plan review. By the building official, or we also use a contract engineering company. That shouldn't take anymore than five days. And then we give it back to the applicant, and if there are any. And if there are any code deficiencies that building official or the engineers noted, then they have to be corrected on the plans. Then they're submitted, and there's a final check on that, and that shouldn't take any more than two days. So, we're gonna, but we don't know how long it's gonna take the applicant. To take that red line version before they make the changes and submit them. So, we don't have control over that, but there are pieces of this that we do have control. And I intend to set performance standards that, of expectations, and. Uh, we will monitor about whether it is, whether we're getting these things done in a timely manner.
Adam Scherer, may I speak to that?
Sure.
I thought I asked permission this time, I do something different. Um, I had uh, contacted Rick and requested that the, that I, if nobody else is interested. Begin to restart receiving copies of all the permits that cross the front desk, no matter what they are. We can choose what we wanna spend any time on trying to, you know, follow and see what happens to them in City Hall. And personally, I don't think it's necessary to see residential permits or individual projects on residential. I'm more interested in commercial, but um, I'm concerned if I wanna follow them to see if there are any hangups in any departments. As they go through the process, especially a development or a big project, I wanna see what it goes through, the steps it goes through in City Hall. And I'd like to do that without having to come down here and bother people, rather see it in writing if I can. So, I had asked Rick if um, he could start providing me with copies of all the permits, regardless of what they are, and then I'll choose which ones I want to review. Um, he indicated that there is some service that you are, I think, already doing. That provides um, a, that produces a report of permits that are in process. Could you explain what that was? Cause that doesn't include the.
Report to the Housing Community Development Department. Where is it?
We have.
San Bernardino County. The Assistant's Office.
We're required to report, if, if you apply for a building permit. We're required to identify when you applied for that, or when you applied for plan review. And at what stage is it, and all the way up to certificate of occupancy, which is final inspection is all done. So, we do a monthly report to them. And so, that's available now. Uh, and I can start getting that, and we have to report it anyway, so it's a, there's no real additional work.
The only difference being that it does not include the applications that got hung up someplace else where. They were told they couldn't do whatever they were dreaming they could do, correct? Cause you don't report if the, if the application is already moot at some early stage. Because of some really out-to-launch idea.
Well, we, we would, we would have to report on anyone that got in, any permit that got into the system. We would have to report either it got final inspections, certificate of occupancy, or withdrawn by.
Got into the system, though. That has to go through a building official or?
Right, yeah. Building official has to receive the plans and do that uh, compliance with building company.
So, I'd like to see all applications, whether, whether they made it past the building official or not.
Yeah, we're working on that. We're working on that.
So, that would be a no?
No, it's not, it's not yet a yes. Because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be definitive, because at this point in time, there are some outstanding issues. For example, if I turn over uh, Bob's. Building plans. Those are copyrighted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for the permit, the application that the planning commission gets when you bring a project to us, there has to be an application.
That's right.
That's all I'm asking for.
Right.
Beyond that.
Well, but the application, until it's accepted by the city, it's not public record. Because, for example, in a recent project, we saw at least ten different versions of how they wanted to lay it out. So, until it became. Uh, reviewed and accepted as being complete, then it's public, then it's public record.
Okay, so I wanna see them before that, because we've had, we've lost developer projects.
They're not, not, not since I've been here.
That you, as the city, or planning department deemed incomplete. After two years of these people trying and being told what they should do for the city.
Incomplete, it's incomplete, and there's a checklist for every application you have to have.
Okay, that, that's okay. I know what I know, okay? So, I'm trying to avoid these projects that ended up walking away. That couldn't get past the word complete, in the opinion of the planning department. That's what I wanna see, what the issues are, cause right now, when I received a call on one of those. Um, it had already been going on for over a year, and I had no idea. And when I tried to talk to Cindy about it, I got nowhere, okay? And there was one issue about plans not being complete, and the whole thing got stopped. Does somebody say right?
Yeah, it, yeah, it won't be complete unless we have a complete application. And at the point where we have a complete application, depending on, so a special use permit or CUP, those come to you. As soon as they're complete, they're in front of you.
Yeah, they're scheduled for here.
I'm talking about when it's still in process, before it's ready to come to planning commission, the steps that all these people have to go through. In order to get a permit or to get to us.
And that's why uh, I'm focusing right now in laying out what all of students. But it, it, it's, it's a simple. The city council, with your recommendations, adopts the zoning code, which has all the requirements. We cannot ask for more than that or less than that. And then we do an analysis about, does their proposal meet these requirements?
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the details within the planning department, or whatever department is stopping these people. From getting to the next step, whatever it is in City Hall. That is arbitrary, that is subjective. Decisions are being made. That don't even make any sense, and I don't understand when they're, when they're asked to get certain plans or do a certain. Thing in the planning department, make a certain, add something to the plans that the city already said they wanted. You, you're bringing in some new part to the puzzle that they're trying to get solved. And you keep adding things on that weren't there in the beginning. So, I, I want to see that process when it happens and understand why those things occur. I think as a planning commission, I think we owe that to people that are coming in to try and do new projects. So, anyway.
Buy the checklist of everything that's required, and uh, on ones that haven't been deemed complete, I don't care if they've been working on for ten years. If it's not complete, if it doesn't have a survey for surveys required, then it's not complete. So.
That you'll sometime.
If I might add something, I'm a special inspector in the construction business, I have some experience reading plans. One of the problems is there's certain mandatory building codes. And if somebody, if the building department calls out things in a set of plans that don't need code. They're non-negotiable, they're mandatory, so if they never meet those, conform to that, the building department can't proceed, even if they want to.
We're gonna do the same thing with the code enforcement. Somebody might not realize you can't park a boat in front of you. I mean, in a subdivision. So, if that's reported, or we observe it, and most of the complaints are, are reported by neighbors. Then we give them a courtesy notice. Just let them know, I don't know when you knew this, but you can't do this. And then they've given ten days. And we re-inspect, and if it's still there, a citation can be issued. Then they have twenty days. And again, if they haven't fixed it, a citation can be issued. And then there's a third citation, and then at that point, we take it to administrative officer and, and, or a hearing judge. And they decide whether uh, it constitutes public nuisance. Now, anybody who asks for, like, the ten days, if anybody asks for, well, can you give me thirty? We give it. Because the goal is, is compliance, and it's not issuing citations. And then if the hearings officer declares a nuisance, we go to court. And then uh, and we have, like, the River Valley Inn has gone through that process. We're now in court, asking for the court to appoint a receiver, either demolish it or rehabilitate. And then the receiver, basically, the court takes it from the property, you know, the player that you're an irresponsible property owner. And the receiver is appointed to fix this problem. And then can sell the property, and then after, they get paid, we get paid fines, costs, attorney's fees. If there's anything left over, the original problem, it's, I can take, that's where.
Okay, well, we're kinda getting a little bit sidetracked and long on all of the areas. Did you have anything else, Rick, that's um. I mean, the water thing, I guess that'll be agendized then, and so we can go.
Uh, the only, the last thing I would say is uh, uh, the mayor will be calling for an economic development summit. Uh, to get all of those uh, economic development players. To the table to talk about how to expand the economic opportunities and needs. So, that's a snippet. Thank you for bringing me.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks, everybody, for coming and participating. Yep.